Hey Phil, can you, um, dang, yes, it's kind of loud in here. Can you turn the volume down in the, uh, the chambers, please? It's very loud.
And holding it, yeah, now it's on.
Oh, okay.
Do the same thing to cut it off.
Oh, okay.
You can be talking and then it mutes. It's supposed to mute. I guess it doesn't.
Make sure it stays on. Okay, alright, that's cool.
Testing, testing.
Okay, it's not, it's not loud downstairs.
It's not.
It's pretty loud here.
Is, yeah.
I mean, I guess, yeah, it's.
Actually, that's fine. But now everybody's gonna have their mic on at the same time?
Correct.
Okay, so if it's too loud, just push it back a little bit.
Testing. It's not too bad. It's a bit echoey, though.
Is that fine?
I think that's fine, yeah. I mean, just push your, push your mic away if you don't want yourself to be too loud.
Ready to call the order then?
We're already.
Copyrights. Let's get your.
One more thing before we start. Remember, we spoke of the Boobage for six thirty?
First of January.
Yeah. We need to make the vote, though, right? Or did some. Don't we need to make an official with a vote today? Or could we do that last time? I couldn't remember. A procedural thing.
No, it's different to this time, I think.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we'll have to vote at this time.
In miscellaneous?
Yeah, we can do that.
We'll ask.
Yeah, because the schedule is set for this year and it's already been released. So that's why.
Yeah, a new toy.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta hit the little.
Well, they don't have any open mics.
Always assume it's on, though, Sam. Always assume it's on.
Okay, we'll call to order the November twenty-first meeting of the Pontiac Zoning Board of Appeals. Roll call, please. Oh, we don't have, do we have someone to do roll? Can you call it all?
Dean?
Here.
Elsie? Sam?
Here.
Sonia?
Present.
Arthur?
Present.
Jenny?
Here.
Gloria?
Present.
And Carlos.
Alright, next item on the agenda, are there any communications?
Um, I think the only communications we'll share at the end of the meeting.
And item number four is adoption of the minutes. Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding the minutes? Does anyone have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Uh, second.
Minutes have been adopted. It was a motion by Ford and a second by McClellan. And the next item, old business. Do we have any old business to attend to?
We do not have any old business this evening.
And.
Would that be voted on or stuff?
That, we'll do that under miscellaneous. You talked about the, the time change? Yep. And for new business, first item in new business, item six point one is a zoning district R-one, single-family dwelling, dimensional variance setback request. And the applicant is Wendellin McNairy. And do we have a presentation from the administration?
Hello, hello.
Thank you.
Welcome. The first item we have today is ZBA two zero dash one one. On behalf of the applicant Wendellin McNairy for the property address four zero four Ditmar. This is a request for a ten-foot front yard dimensional variance for the construction of a new single-family home within fifteen feet of the twenty-five-foot yard setback. So you may recall, we reviewed this item in November of twenty twenty, with the applicant requesting a variance of seven feet to permit a, it was a, an eighteen-foot setback. This applicant has then updated their plans and through the process of kind of revisions and updates, they realized that the variance they requested was not great enough and they needed an additional three feet to properly fit the home on the property. So this is a rehearing, but also the same item, we're just kind of updating and redoing that initial variance from twenty twenty. So for context, the property is located at the intersection of Ditmar and I can't see the other street from over here. You said Harvey?
Harvey.
Harvey. It is located on the northwest corner. It is a corner property, so it maintains two frontages. One on Ditmar, which requires a setback of twenty-five feet, and your frontage along Harvey, which also requires a setback of twenty-five feet. This is very similar to the plan that you received in twenty twenty. The only difference is the house is adjusted slightly, moved further to the west. So it does meet the side yard setback of five feet on the inside of the lot. And the additional feet they are requesting a variance for is along Harvey. So they are requesting a ten-foot variance setback from the twenty-five requirement along Harvey. Practical difficulty for dimensional variances, they must establish practical difficulty or non-use variances. So some of those are as follows. The property does meet the standards for minimum lot size, however, because of the configuration of that lot, abiding by the strict standards of the zoning ordinance make it very difficult to construct or build a home on that property. So the second, corner lots have reduced building setbacks and available building, buildable area because of those setbacks. And reducing the building envelope poses a challenge to the applicant in her desire to maximize the use of the property as a residential dwelling site. So this is the inability to build a minimum twelve-hundred-square-foot home per our ordinance and still be in compliance with our setbacks. It's very difficult with a lot, with this configuration, and that's the practical difficulty. So we summarize those criteria here, very similar to those approved in twenty twenty. The existing size and location of the property is unique and requires a setback to build as requested by the applicant. Granting the dimensional variance would provide substantial justice to the applicant in respect to their property. The request is a result of the existing property's configuration and intersection and is not a result of a issue created by the applicant. The dimensional variance will uphold the spirit of the zoning ordinance. It would not have any adverse impacts on the neighborhood. And then it does comply with section six point four zero one of the zoning ordinance and as well as the special exemption criteria in six point three zero three of the zoning ordinance. And then just to recap, some of the staff findings, the property is owned R-one, is a vacant R-one residential lot. It is located at Harvey and Ditmar. Corner lots have two frontages, so they must meet that front yard setback on both frontages. And then again, in November of twenty twenty, the ZBA did approve a variance to allow a setback of seventeen feet. We are amending or updating that to allow a setback of fifteen feet. Again, you can see that image there, dimensional variance of ten feet from the front yard setback of twenty-five. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Smith? Well, I got you up there, just a couple of quick questions.
Yep.
If it's buildable by ordinance and it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to put a twelve-hundred square-foot home in an area buildable by ordinance, should we not change the ordinance to accommodate for corner lots instead of doing it through ZBA?
It would require a, a, a different change, the zoning ordinance. So there's a bit of a catch-twenty-two in our ordinance where most, the lots are buildable if you can meet those setbacks in minimum twelve-hundred square foot. In those situations where you can't meet one of those right criteria, you would then have to kind of go back and change the ordinance. So in this scenario, we would either have to reduce the minimum requirement, the minimum home size from twelve-hundred to something less that would allow a more appropriate setback. Or we would have to change the overall setback for properties that have that secondary frontage on the smaller sheet, on the smaller blocks.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was getting at. And it seems to me that the issue is with the width on one side.
Yes, yes.
And that you could, that the ordinance could simply say where the width is, you know, on one corner side is less than, than.
And, and you are correct. Like I said, it would require us to.
Make a change.
Following making this decision, it's not often we've had this specific scenario where someone wants to build a home on a corner property and the setbacks don't allow that. In fact, as long as I've been here, this is the first home that has tried it, which leads us to investigate further. What's the best way to address these future scenarios, which, as you said, would be to reduce that required setback along those secondary frontages?
Yeah, and you're right. I mean, it, it, it depends, I guess, if you did a quick analysis, how many lots out there would meet that need? And then, and then, does it make sense, or do you just keep going to ZBA?
And it, it would be arguable that they all would fall under that criteria. The setback is always going to be twenty-five. So even other lots that are on the corner, the one adjacent to this one, the one across the street from this one, if it's a vacant lot and the homeowner only owns that corner property and they want to build a home on it, they're going to run across this same challenge when it comes to the setback along the secondary street.
Yeah, I would think, Mr. Chair, if, if we started getting an overabundance of these coming through, yeah, then Donovan, it, it certainly would say, hey.
Yeah.
We really gotta change the rules versus everybody coming in always get a variance for it. But at this point, it, it, it seems like they're.
Yeah.
Kind of rare.
So far, they've been rare. But it is possible that in the future, if we get a housing boom where people want to build homes in rapid succession, then we would hit this challenge.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
We had, I remember, because I've been up here a long time, we have a problem with Pontiac that the lots that they made for the houses, when you go to rebuild on them, there's not enough room on the lots. That's why you see people buying double lots to build one home on. And over in Heriting Hills, we had somewhat that problem before. So we have had that problem for a long time because the lots that they built on and they tore the house down, well, they, they were smaller houses, like a little shotgun house or something. So now you can't build a whole house, you need two lots.
There was, the way the current ordinance, the minimum lot size for new lots, for single-family homes is sixty feet. Current homes, majority of the homes in the city are thirty, forty, fifty. Which would, you, you could look at it and interpret that all the lots are non-conforming, but all the lots are actually grandfathered.
Right.
So they, they are buildable, but this goes back to what I said before, you have to meet the setbacks and the new setbacks and the new minimum square footage and your grandfathered lot is now a buildable lot, which again speaks to another change that may need to take place within the zoning ordinance when it comes to permitting the construction of new single-family homes.
Okay, good. Alright, thank you for that.
No problem.
Yeah, you, would you like to ask a question?
No, he answered when Sam asked that, asked that question, that kind of clarified it for him. Thank you, Sam.
And would the applicant like to speak at all? You don't have to. Just want to make sure you got your opportunity. Any que, any further questions or?
I would like to say before we vote that this is my relative, this is my family member. So I am gonna, I'm gonna abstain from voting, but, but I have no problem with the request and, and obviously having this go through, but I would want to let the record show that.
Do we have a motion?
A motion.
To approve?
Yes.
A second?
Alright, we got a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Chairman Bevaqua?
Good enough, yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
I abstain.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Harris Ford?
Yes.
Okay. So five, nothing.
Motion passes. Alright, next item, six point two. We've got applicant Joseph Lawson, Consumer Energy. It's a R-one, single-family dwelling district and it is appeal of administrative decision.
Thank you. Alright, this item, there is not a presentation, however, I'll, I'll kind of articulate and narrate through this one. This request, and I apologize, it, I'm looking at the packet and I think the one-pager was omitted from the packet, but I can kind of catch you up on this item. The application for one seventy-nine Nebraska Avenue, located at the intersection of Nebraska and Woodward Ave, kind of right behind St. Joe's. That is currently a vacant R-one residential property and there currently exists a utility site for Consumers Energy. Adjacent to that site is another utility site, I believe that's DTE. That's a DTE utility site, and then this is adjacent next to it. The applicant's requested to make some slight modifications to their fencing and upgrade the fencing that was there. Currently, there exists on the fencing barbed wire. The applicants wanted to make the improvements to the site, replace the existing fence, and also put back that barbed wire that did exist. There are two codes, one in our municipal code and one in our zoning ordinance that speaks to this situation. The first is the zoning ordinance where barbed wire is not permitted in residential districts. And, and for that reason, the application was denied to not allow, to allow the fence, but to not allow the barbed wire. The other criteria speaks to our municipal code that provides an exemption to that criteria where you would be allowed to put barbed wire on a property, however, that speaks to industrial and, and manufacturing properties. So that exemption would not apply to this property. So for those two reasons, the Planning Division did not approve the zoning compliance request for barbed wire. When I provided the orientation for this board, I mentioned there were four types of cases you could receive, use variances, dimensional variances, interpretations, and the fourth being appeals to administrative decisions. And this is an appeal to the administrative decision to deny the use of barbed wire on fencing of properties located in the R-one residential district. So that is the request of this applicant for your consideration is to reverse that decision, to allow the barbed wire, or to uphold the staff's decision, which would be to prohibit or not allow barbed wire on fences in the R-one district at one seventy-nine Nebraska. And that's the presentation. There are some information included, the applicants did provide to you, I believe it's a two-pager that has some of their points, and they are here in the audience. So if you have any questions from me or myself, I can answer those or you can direct those to the applicants. Thank you.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Smith?
The question that I have, was there, the barbed wiring that's there, was it okay in the begin, beforehand?
It is most likely a grandfathered barbed fire, barbed wire fence. So at the time that it was constructed, I don't have the exact date, it was permitted at that time. So now we are in the process of removing the fence, removing the barbed wire, and then reinstalling a new fence, and then putting the barbed wire back on it. And that constitutes this review because we're taking what a fence that doesn't have it and we're adding barbed wire back.
Okay, so the barbed wiring, what is that for?
And then I can let the applicant come up and talk.
If the applicant has a, a presentation, if you want to do that first and then get to the questions, if you don't, then feel free to answer.
No, we don't have a digital presentation, my apologies. I would have brought one, but I did not know that was an option. My name's Joe Lawson, I'm here on behalf of Consumers Energy. For the record, our address is One Energy Plaza, Jackson, Michigan. And to answer your, your question, ma'am, it's, it's a security issue. We do follow the guidelines that are set forth by the Department of Transportation as well as Homeland Security. And within those guidelines, and I want to specify, they are guidelines, not requirements from the federal government, that we provide a seven-foot-tall chain-link fence with a foot of barbed wire that adorns the, the top. So we are asking for your consideration to, to allow us to do so and to abide by those guidelines.
Okay, can I? Okay, I don't know if I could vote on this because I was a lineman for Consumers Energy for a lot of years, so I don't know, would that be a conflict or, I'm retired now.
Probably not.
Okay, what type of facility is this?
This is a gas regulator station. So this regulates the gas pressure that comes from our higher-pressure mains and it, it basically reduces the gas pressure so it can be distributed throughout the community.
Yeah, I know, because I was in gas lines. You know, I'm not going to vote on this, but I want to say something about this. When you have a gas regulation station that regulates the pressure for the entire city of Pontiac, our vast area, like that big main that was blowing up in Great Lakes Crossing, they had two valves that was took on each end and they shut it down. And this stopped it, this in the middle, it would sound like a jet plane. That's what those regulations are for, to push gas forward. Here, here, if somebody get in there, they could shut down a, a whole area of Pontiac, a half of Pontiac. That is the reason why they put the barbed wire and all precautions. And also, we had all this terrorist activity at one time that they were gotten with, but that is the particular reason, if you go to Roale Oak, Roale Oak has the same thing around their facility and most of them, for the particular reason, you don't want anybody getting in there and shutting down our entire city. So that's, it's not a normal thing. I won't be voting on it, but I'm just saying, from being a gas lineman for forty-five years, I know it's not a nor, normal thing and they could shut down, and if kids or valves get in there, you don't want that either.
Was, Mr. Chair, just a quick question. Donovan, the, the fence, or you, you may be able to answer this as well, sir. The fence that was taken down, was, are we talking the same height and, and, or is it, is it higher than the one that was taken down at this point?
Doug, this is, Doug, Doug Scott's my, my engineering consultant, so I'm asking him. Well, actually, wanted to.
State your name, please.
Doug Scott, Rogue Professional Services Company, Flint, Michigan. Actually, a little bit of discrepancy, just full disclosure, the, the site did not have fencing on it originally. The adjacent site, the DTE site, has barbed wire, I believe it's six-foot or seven-foot with chain link around it, so.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, thank you.
That was, that was gonna be my question.
Thank you for that clarity.
Were you replacing something or that's a new, new fence that you're putting up and you just want to include the barbed wire?
Correct. Plant, Planning Commission, or I guess administratively, approved the site plan with just a six-foot chain-link fence because we needed to get moving on the construction to get it done before winter. And so now, we're coming back to ask if we can put barbed wire up for security purposes.
With the same six-foot chain-link fence?
Yep, yep.
That's existing now?
Existing now, yes.
Okay, so you're adding, oh, okay, okay.
Any other questions? Yeah, I think that when you start talking about infrastructure like that, it should probably be secure. Nobody loves barbed wire, but there's times at which it makes sense, so.
Yes.
Do we open a public hearing? Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. And do we have a, a motion?
I motion to approve.
Second?
Alright, we've got a, a motion from May, a second from Burke.
And if you could clarify the motion for approval to reverse staff's decision and to permit the barbed wire on the fence?
So moved? Agree?
Oh, yes, I agree. I agree.
Yeah, yeah, we're just may, asking you to clarify.
Oh, yes.
That is your motion.
Yes.
And support on that?
Yes.
Roll call, please. Alright.
Chairman Bevaqua?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
McClellan?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Harris Ford?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
I have a question for Donovan here.
Yeah.
How come they allowed DTE to have a fence and it's one right there, but you won't let another one be erected in the same type of facility?
We did not approve that fence for DTE, so that would have been a grandfather fence from when they constructed it, so I don't know the exact date, but at the time they constructed it, they were allowed to put barbed wire on it. So that could have been done. So that could have been done nineties, early two thousands, or later than that.
Well, I know that Homeland Security came down with a thing when I was working at Consumers that they wanted all of their, all of these gas facilities and stuff, they want them secure. Because we had people, way before that, you had people slipping inside and turning a valve off to a wide area of homes and stuff. So they wanted, that wasn't here, but it was somewhere else. Because we have gas controls, so they wanted to secure everything. So that's the part of Homeland Security wanted to secure all these facilities. Okay, that's a-
Next item is six point three. It's, this is where we're going to do the meeting calendar with the change in the time.
Yes.
Do we need an official vote on changing the time?
Yep, so you don't need an official vote on changing the time. You just need a vote to approve the schedule for next year. And in the schedule, we did make the note to change the time from six o'clock to six-thirty. So as long as you don't see any objections to the 2023 schedule and the third Monday at six-thirty, you can approve it as presented.
Any questions or a motion?
I move to approve it, this is my schedule.
Second.
Roll call.
I'm going to have all of your names memorized by the end of the night. Bevaqua?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
McClellan?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Harris Ford?
Yes.
That's on the first, first of the year, right?
Yep. And that was a May motion and a McClellan second, right? Did I get that right? What was it? I'm sorry, did I say, yeah, I meant Burke, yeah.
Can I ask another question? Who's the guy on the end?
We're about to get to that.
You know, you keep talking about, I don't know, just who are these guys?
And just a reminder, it is a six o'clock meeting for December if there is a ZBA meeting.
Okay.
Do you want to go to public comment first?
Yeah, let's get through public comment. We're going to open public comment, and seeing nobody, we'll close public comment. And next item is miscellaneous and-
So I would like to introduce myself formally, publicly to each of you on ZBA. My name is Mark Yandrick. I'm the new Planning Manager for the City of Pontiac. I'm very excited to be here. This is day six for me. And so there's a lot to get involved. I do have a lot of experience with local government. I've previously worked for a jurisdiction where a Planning Commission member, who they were part of, they were BZA, actually wrote the book on variances. So, and I'm very excited. You guys sound like a very educated, informed group, and I'm very much looking forward to working with you. On the downside of that, I am excited to work and build a team and work with building Pontiac. But unfortunately, tonight is Mr. Smith's, Donovan's last night with the city as he is taking another opportunity, so.
Yes.
And so-
I'm sorry.
What are you doing to?
So I'll be going back to Detroit and doing some work in Detroit. The exact place I can't name at the moment, but that's where I'll be transitioning to.
Motion denied.
Yeah, congrats. Thank you, thank you. So I will stay in touch. I will visit because I love all my boards. I can't pick a favorite. But I know you're in good hands. Mark's well and prepared to be able to advise and move you all forward. I don't, I'm not, I public speak all the time, but I'm not as prepared for situations like these. But I've enjoyed my time here in Pontiac, all the years I've been here. A lot of people here have seen me grow up. So I say Detroit raised me, but Pontiac made me. So again, I will greatly miss everyone, all the staff, all the residents, all the boards. Again, this has been a worthwhile experience and I truly appreciate everybody, and you will all be greatly missed. So, thank you.
We'll miss you.
We miss you.
Thank you.
Will Donovan's positions be replaced or is?
We have got some things in the pipeline to actually have several planners. So hopefully in the next week or two, some postings will be going out, so. Dean, as chair, I may want to have a conversation with you over the next couple of weeks just representing this board, just to see what's going well. Maybe there's some things that would be helpful for this group going forward too.
One thing I can mention just in public here is we, I did put in a request for some training.
Okay.
Maybe a training session on the night of a meeting. And haven't really heard back on that. I mentioned it to Mr. McGinnis as well. There was supposed to be some, something in the works. The planner that we used, I used to deal with when I was in Rochester, is that McKenna? She does training sessions. I know she's very good, but there's all kinds of opportunities out there, I think, for that. So I passed along her information as well. So we'll see what happens with that, but that's certainly something that, you know, I'd like to see happen. I know I'd need to refresh her too.
Absolutely. And there's several topics that I think a lot of boards and commissions are asking for. And, you know, MML, I believe, has a lot of opportunities. So maybe we'll look at something in January, February, if we can schedule it, you know, appropriately with this group.
Okay, great. Danielle, I'm available anytime you need to. You got my, you got my numbers, right?
Absolutely. I got your email enough to get started, so.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
We need bigger and color, color photos of what we looking at. You know, the black, we need blown up, bigger in color and stuff.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
All right, anything else for miscellaneous? Anyone else? All right, I guess we'll move to a German. Good night, everyone.
I'm learning how to use this thing.
Good night, everyone.
Yeah, I got it. Red button?